...couple decades. And I believe that we are carefully but deliberately moving forward at a resolution of that. There have been expenses related to that that we've had to deal with. DPW side and myself today, soil excavation to remove the mess that had been made mostly by residents because they didn't manage their waste mower well carefully. And we're so that eliminated a source. As we eliminate the source, we're now doing more sampling. So yes, there's just an ongoing in addition to things that happen around town. We have a problem on Old Smithville Road where we are likely to need a consultant to evaluate the cover that is restricting water flow as of any opinion of residents nearby. And we can agree that there are issues with that cover that need to be assessed and perhaps replaced. But the need for consultants in the DPW side continues. The other areas where we are doing work, like the oil line, sewer circumstances, has come out of different forms.
We do our own work on some of those road projects, so we do our own drainage work.
Yes.
We need that.
At times, a lot of it's just replacement of existing deteriorated piping in the same site as I don't have to go to additional consulting for business.
Just so I can do the work instead of having the contractor do the work. So with that one change, I intend to pay a motion for the highway department of 1,513,332. Would you like this as well? Is there a second?
Second.
So would you like this to be on your... Any other discussion?
Yeah. Road resurfacing, right? There is this value. Last year, we spent $350,000 to approve just the 450. I didn't have a lot. End of the road, they're a market share, but I guess my recommendation would be to use the 350,000 again. And then if possible, we can put a lot of it next year for road resurfacing. Hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money in a tight budget, so.
So I'm not really hearing what's up.
So I'd like to reduce road resurfacing by a hundred thousand dollars to 350,000 because we've never gone close to the 450,000. And I know there's a carryover usually.
The reason that there has been a carryover is because we have been doing this in a way that we're trying to build this resource up to an $800,000 per year budget element. We will do roughly two miles of road. That is what we you just authorized us to go ahead with. And we will be spending down what we have built up and adding this to that. And I have to discourage any consideration of reduction. This is, I think Cindy has, I think, 60 photographs that we could stop and watch from locations around the town that, you know, everyone's got their favorite. They're all a concern to myself and the public works department. And it's going to take us some time to get there, but we won't get there if we compromise on this issue as it relates to how much we put into funding. It needs to continue to build up. I'd like to make it $800,000 this year, but we just cannot. So the advocacy for the 450 is worth consideration for the challenge or other, but not backing away from our need to deal with our roadways because, you know, there's an expense to all of us with automobile repair and the risk of injury to some of these circumstances.
So just to go off that, so I see in FY '17, we spent 235,000. But then in FY '18, of the 300,000 that was allocated, we only used 89,000. And so far today, the 350,000 allocated that was allocated as a budget last year, we've only spent 104,000. So do we wait until our road is almost completely done and then we build it? Or do we... Why spend so little?
No, again, we're not spending. You just authorized a contract for $600,000.
Yeah, $700,000.
And with an alternate that we're holding on frankly to determine whether or not this money supply will give us and how close to the budget we actually wind up. These are unit price contracts. You know, if we can narrow the road in some places, we will. But we have to expand the roadway because it's only 15 feet wide. If we're going to do that, we're not just putting a coating of asphalt over bad roadways. We're rebuilding those things and making them appropriate, at least to the extent of the roadway width that's available to us. So all of those things, councilman, those here, we have a plan. We'll spend every dollar of this money. That's what was lacking when I first built this budget three years ago is that there wasn't a plan. And we have a plan now. It is to get two miles of road done every year. And as you just authorized, we'll run away to doing that this year.
Again, we're going to come back and revisit front balance later on to see what we can hopefully improve into the goal of. I hope this will come out favorable.
That would be based on completion this current fiscal year and whether or not we should.
Balance, yes. In this copy, it's not a question.
Yes.
So this area has made a motion to decrease that by 100,000. Is there a second? There's no second motion. So there is a motion and a second. Director. Mr. Baden.
I'm not going to interrupt you, sir.
No, sir.
I just want to at least clarify for the councilman. What we've done and the administrator, I think, has explained it better than I certainly could. You can't go by the actuals for the last this present year and last year. All we've been doing is catching up on drainage work to prepare ourselves for the bigger number to go for a contract which was just completed. If you take out that 100,000, that's going to cripple us to do that contract, complete that contract.
That again, so I guess that we're in that I'm going to pour out the support, counsel to whiskey and the folks that we look at, hey, that's not what I'm asking for.
In addition to the 450.
Yeah, that's how I see it.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted with the actuals, that's exactly where we're going.
I like the pictures, Cindy, but you ride on any of our roads, they're a mess. They're a mess. We need to do this. Thank you for the pictures. So there's a motion and a second for highway department of 1,513,332. Any other discussion? Go call vote.
Mrs. Vado Molyneux? Yes. So, Mara? Mr. Ojea?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Baden?
Yes. Next item is parks and recreation in the amount of 179,277,000. Their motion to approve. Would you like this as well? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by this to be on your... Any discussion? There are none. Go call vote.
Mrs. Vado Molyneux? Yes. Mrs. Mara? Yes. Mr. Ojea?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Baden?
Yes. Next slide is the tree ward in the amount of 31,730,000. Their motion to approve.
Several.
Motion by this to be on your... Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mrs. O'Hara. Discussion. This came from the department itself, and I'm looking at tree removal pruning. Department had recommended 20, administrator 30, budget committee 30. I'm not quite sure what the why we have a difference. May I ask for clarification, Mr. President?
I think in a short, we can get more clarification, but I think my understanding is we're trying to address deferment maintenance. That's really what we're getting. We're trying to catch up again. I may be wrong, but.
That's... Well, if I may continue, the state also takes care of our state law. So deferment is okay among us. Thank you for that. But most of the state laws take care of that.
Yeah, state law. These are these are town roads.
Yep.
You know, we've had trees fall in the middle of the storm that we've got to kick here and we haven't been able to take them for that long.
We have limited ability. We have a bucket truck that will only reach now about 30 feet, right? But it's close. We can't deal with the larger trees in town. And it is the larger trees in town that are at risk right now from the gypsy moth infestation we had over two years ago. Statewide, I think DGM is estimated that there are like 30,000 acres of old trees around the state that have been killed by that deforestation two and a half years or two years ago. And what we're going to see is what the advocacy is that we're going to see those trees in larger and larger branches coming down. We need to be prepared. We spent, we just spent $12,000 of this year's budget dealing with probably 20 locations. And there's a ton more locations that we need. And that's why I have been adamant that we need to raise that budget more than it's going to be a public safety issue.
Yeah, if I may elaborate, cost of the gypsy moth set 380,000 acres. We're talking about roadways, first responders getting up where they need to be, customers without utilities, not all of our neighborhoods are underground utilities, so it can be very disruptive. So thank you.
Is part of this issue that our guys can't work on the power lines as well?
Absolutely. They, you know, we have some training as it relates to that, but it's just not our thing. I mean, if they're all in the patients, it's what we can do with the equipment we have and the resources. People are willing, and good is the safety issue.
So there's a motion and a second on the tree ward 31,730. Further discussion? Go call vote.
Mrs. Vado Molyneux? Yes. Mrs. Mara? Yes. Mr. Ojea?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Baden?
Yes. Next item is the streetlights, $110,000. Their motion to approve. Motion for discussion. Would you like this as well? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by this to Ojea. Discussion.
Mr. President, since we've gone with PRISM, we can see that our expenses have gone down. And up until May 31st, proposed approved budget 120,000. We have 70,000. You divide that by 11, you can come up with a difference. Department was 127. I'm not sure why it was so high. I can see that the administrator and the budget committee were recommending 110. I'm going to make a motion to reduce that to 90,000 based on history.
Is the motion by this as well, Mr. Zelensky, to reduce 110 to 90,000, reduction of 20,000? Is there a second? No second for discussion? 200,000.
I can understand your aggression out for approaching that, councilman, but we have not received bills for six months from National Grid. This is part of, we're still in the transition of the relighting, relamping of the town. Received emails just yesterday morning with RID and PRISM pointing at one another as to why we haven't been able to close this up. We do expect that the current year billing will reach the budget amount, very close to it. We are standing by our budget for the coming year with our fingers crossed at 110.
Okay, so hearing from you, Administrator Zowski, as of May 31st, we had 70,817. Now, let's sustain the six months of waiting.
I've been waiting to see the bill.
All right, thank you. You enjoy.
I do, Mr. President. Make a motion, withdraw, so there's a second. So go back to the original motion on 110,000. The streetlights, there are a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so I'm just curious, McCrory's uptick last year. Why did it go up in 2016? I know it's invoice.
Council, we can hear that.
Sorry. I just wonder why the uptick from the 109 to the 120 to the 127. I know that's what the department requested, but it sounds like it's still high. And I know this past invoice, but it sounds like it's trending the other way instead of now. So is there a cost savings or?
Well, there has been a substantial cost savings. It's like 60% that we've realized from the, you know, to go back to the first hour. This is all just the billing coming in from the multiple suppliers that are involved with this process. And there have been ups and downs. We do think that the 110 that we've got budgeted for the 2020 year will be the going forward number. But have just been, it's been a, you know, we're dealing with a puzzle where the pieces keep changing size and color. It's really crazy. I mean, I've got a meeting on Wednesday with PRISM to sort through this. And again, if we're even in person pointing one another, we're trying to... What would you?
Any other discussion? Go call vote.
Mrs. Vado Molyneux? Yes. Mrs. Mara? Yes. Mr. Ojea?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Baden?
Yes. Next item is rubbish disposal in the amount of 781,400,000. Their motion to approve. So what? Would you like this as well? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by this to be on your... Any discussion? There are none. Go call vote.
Mrs. Vado Molyneux? Yes. Mrs. Mara? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Baden?
Yes. Next item is debt service principal in the amount of 3,21,767,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Several.
Motion by Mrs. Baden, is there a second? No second. Any discussion? Yeah, discussion, Mr. President. So if the school building bought by the department was $145,000 and then the administrator and the budget committee recommended 215,000, why does it swing twice the way it's always swinging now?
Actually, the department was also me. So that was we in the beginning were reading over it to the 10 year or 20 year, but that was just an estimate. When we finally got a final numbers, it is 15.
Okay. Thanks, Senator. All right, thanks. Any other discussion? Go call vote.
Mrs. Vado Molyneux? Yes. Mrs. Mara? Yes. Mr. Ojea?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Baden?
Yes. Next item is debt service interest in the amount of 1,147,251,000. Their motion to approve. Vote. Motion by Mrs. Zelensky, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Discussion? There are none. Go call vote.
Mrs. Vado Molyneux? Yes. Mrs. Mara? Yes. Mr. Ojea?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Baden?
Yes. Next item is employee benefits in the amount of 2,562,268,000. Their motion to approve. For discussion, motion. Motion by Mrs. Zelensky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Baden, is there a... Discussion, Mr. Zelensky.
Looking back to fiscal year 2017 adopted budget debt numbers, not there. Blank. Vacation sick payout. Now, if I'm trying to figure a trend going on here, I can't see what happened fiscal... At least it's not on the micro. Is that up there now?
No.
No. So we're at the bottom of page 11.
It's not there.
It's below that. Two lines below that. Vacation payout.
So years ago, that money, prior accounts, was a reserve money. So it was in our reserve account under that account for 50 years of pay. Those reserves ran out. So that year, we were hit with under $36,000 of expenditures that weren't budgeted for. We were always reserve, we were reserves, but when they ran out, we started to build up a fund for it and to start budgeting for it. So any unused, we put a new reserve for it, but we still budget for the expected payout.
That's probably the issue. The other part is I wanted the council to see what was going on in terms of these large payouts based on the contracts that we have and frankly, the orders that we have in place. It's a very expensive revenue that causes, you know, large payouts as people leave. We can be in favor of that or hold on not trying to cause a debate. I'm simply rather not looking to debate the issue for that tonight. The issue just is making sure that we're all aware because prior to that, I don't believe there was any indication anyone that these kinds of numbers have gone up to the door.
So what are you doing? You're bringing liability that we have in the budget by one of these.
Exactly.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, yes. So I'm looking at the budget, department and administrator man, budget committee, 129,388, which is a steep jump. It's almost, let's just call it 28%, 27.96. Are we anticipating more vacation sick payout people leaving or how, what are we basing that on?
Those are forecast, there's precise calculations based on forecast retirement.
Retirement, okay. Thank you. Question? More of a comment than a question? If you look at the health insurance for retirees and active, it's just more like pointing it out just so that people can be aware. Yeah, health insurance for retirees is going up 10%. The health insurance for active is going up almost 4%. Those numbers are pushing the cap or exceeding the cap. It's a big, it's a big part of this process and it's something that we need to get out of around because it will get out of control.
If I might add to that, Mr. President, this is the one area where the budget committee and I differed substantially, as you can see. And you may want to get their input. I, for one, caution that the objective to appropriately fund our OPEB contribution is something that should not be taken lightly. We have by audit, a OPEB obligation is now over about $9 million. There are things that we can try to do in contract negotiations to be able to mitigate some of that. And we are. And we are. However, even with mitigations, we have a large post employment benefit obligation and a fund for that that is currently at about $800,000. So do the math, we're a 10% funded. We're not looking to change that in a year, but like our road resurfacing program, it is something that I believe that we need to remain vigilant about. And yes, is this a difficult budget year? Absolutely. But what's going to happen if we shy away from making the appropriate payment is that that number is just going to keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we're not going to have the money there. This number needs to go up to a point that at least 20 years up, we have an adequate fund for that obligation as required by the government guidance that we achieve. We are, you know, paying our obligation on an annual basis, no doubt. This is trying to build up our, our funding for the long-term obligation to the appropriate level. I believe that the $250,000 that I recommended was both appropriate and wise, both short term and long, despite this current budget accounting.
Not knowing what's going on in Smithville, this is a kind of trick that you, and I'm going to ask him to make a soup, say it there. So if North Smithville properly, 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 properly funds the OPEB in another community, stop 10 years down the road, is there a possibility that the state can come back and say, we have to share that with someone? No? No. Put me at ease with it.
There was, you may recall, it was actually the nation that led to the settlement of the OPEB contribution by all the cities in town. Our liability is only the town's liability. It was separated out, second gave it out. Our liability will never be shifted to another town. No, another town will be shifted to us.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I, I understand the OPEB. I just struggle with it because I look at it, for example, we fully fund our liabilities on a yearly basis. We don't have this pension thing out there that we're not funding or anything like that. We fully fund it. And then, and then the state comes in, the one-size-fits-all. And that's really what OPEB is, it's a one-size-fits-all. Everybody has to be in it, whether you do it or not. I understand it. We need to put money into it. And I understand it, but it's like I'm torn on this because I know we need to put money into it. It's a tight budget year. How much of it do we put in? It's kind of tough. I got it highlighted, I don't know. Putting something is better than nothing. And we're getting, we're getting close, but it just, I just struggle with this OPEB. Since it's since day one, I was on the budget committee when it first came in, and I was like, we've got to put money aside. We fully fund it. It didn't really make sense to me to be backing money for something that we fully fund. And I looked at it a little more, yeah, and the state thing, but it's a one-size-fits-all. And we're not, we're not like every other community. We're like a lot of other communities, but we're not like the production societies and problems that have these huge unfunded liabilities that the state wants you to start backing up. We do have some, you know, we do have it out there, but the way they project it out there is kind of odd.
Mr. President, you articulated that much better than I currently, but that's basically where I was going. Thank you for the detail I was missing. The administrator said that this is where even budget committee don't rate. Can I ask the budget committee, is there a... What else? Sure. Would anybody like to weigh in on the OPEB? Why you chose that number? Maybe John?
This is real easy. Any other year, we would 100% agree. We agree with what you just said. You know, this is a year where we're very, very close to the 4%. You haven't gone to the school yet. You're going back to contingencies. There's still some big numbers yet to go. Maybe you put that aside and see if there's anything left when you're done. So we want to fund it too. It's not that we don't. Maybe you put it back and see if there's anything there when we're done with the budget and see if we have any room before we get to 11.
John, are you still comfortable with the $200,000 recognition of budget committee? At this point?
At this point, absolutely. Because I still know what to have.
Thank you.
I could help, I'm going to try to do some math here. The, with a $9 million burden, to be 100% funded based on $200,000 a year, where now a lot of years, 50 years out, that's the problem. That is the problem. What we're trying to do is work this number up to a point where in 20 years, we are appropriately funded. It doesn't mean 100%. And, you know, this is the, these are the kicking the can down the road sort of, well, I understand where we're at, but I, you know, feel it's my obligation as the administrator to be fiscally responsible and say, we need to do this. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. $2,562,268 budgeting. Motion and a second, or any discussion?
I think that a little bit, a little bit, it's quite rough in all the changes we made with salary. So it's not the same number as of those, I think it's a little bit, probably a thousand dollars difference.
Okay.
Just, because by this in here and you changed some people's salaries, they tripled down.
Okay. We have 4,000 that we added, maybe.
Yes.
That's important to note that it's not 4,000 now, it's 4,700, maybe we need to add a little. What's going into? We still have discussions. Mr. President, make a motion to adopt the administrator's proposed amount of about $250,000 OPEB out here. Both sides is confusing it. I don't know. So if it happens, it works out. So it's a motion for $50,000. The motion by Mrs. Zelensky, they increased OPEB to 250,000. Is there a second? I'm going to second for discussion. How do you know where you put 50,000? Based on the actions that we've already taken, we add 50,000 dollars that we can put in there?
Should we call vote?
We should call vote.
Very close, as we can.
I'll defer. I'll defer. We're going to defer the discussions. Why do you not have the money? I don't want to levy anyone taxes, I mean, that's clear. But why?
Based on the administrator's number that he gave us, I believe to go to 4 percent. We have $21,000 to play with. That's the bottom.
Okay. All right.
Or we don't recommend it. Now I have a play with. Do you want me to draw a motion? We can always revisit these things.
Yeah, I'll draw a motion. May I make a draw as a motion, Mr. President?
Motion is withdrawn, the second withdrawn. So we're back to the original motion. Number is $2,563,543. Based on updated sensitive corrections that we made.
$50,000, is that right? So?
Yeah, about $1,200,000.
One more time, what is the next? Okay, got it. Do we have a motion?
Is there a motion to approve that number?
Yes, approved.
Motion by Mrs. Wlensky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, any other discussion? I think we should put it on until we find out what else is coming out. I don't think we should hold it on. We can go back and then, their obligation, most of that stuff is tied to contracts.
Good.
You've held the other line out of the contingency by the end. You could hold, you could withdraw the motion. I can draw, maybe I can draw a motion.
And the second is withdrawn, so that. Next item is insurance premiums, an amount of $267,370. There a motion to approve?
Approved.
Motion by Mrs. Wlensky, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call over.
Mrs. Vannoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogea?
Yes.
Mr. Wlensky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. The next item is capital expenditures. The Budget Committee is recommending $765,588. There a motion to approve?
Do we skip? They're all skipped.
There's nothing in, settlement obligations, nothing in there. Excuse me?
Okay.
For capital expenditures, $765,880. There a motion to approve? Budget Committee.
So?
Motion by Mrs. Wlensky, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara, discussion?
Yeah, a discussion. So, I have a couple things. So, the first thing is cherry work funds stuff. I understand that it's an area of importance, which carries the mind this year in this budget cycle. Why not? It's already here.
Well, in the first of 20 years, I think. And my feeling is, counseling that we need to look at these things in the ideals before they become the situation we have, obviously, that we can't get through or, you know, we're spending money to sustain sandbags and water as we continue to wrestle with beavers and, you know, culverts that aren't being maintained by others and such. It's just, it is an absolute... It's very disappointing that this hasn't been dealt with a decade ago. Again, it's another one of those things. Pick the can down the road and wait until, I mean, in, I think in Johnston, they spent over $100,000 on a weekend dealing with, you know, a simple circumstance like this. I don't want to get there. I want to be ready to deal with this circumstance and get it behind us. Are we going to fix it this year? I'm sure we won't. Are we going to begin to understand what needs to be done? We need to begin to understand what needs to be done and build that into our budgeting process so that we can, and maybe pursue ranks to be able to mitigate this challenge.
Mr. Wlensky, I agree with you. That's been a long, long-term problem and it has not been, they put little Band-Aids on it, but have the rest of the problem. And his book was individual, big box, and some, it continues, and they're using their returns all the time. Premiums, et cetera, will go up. It will be a burden to the end of the door as well, if this has to go through.
Mr. President, I want to draw my motion to approve the amount of $765,880. And my reasoning is, well, it's a motion.
Can I give you my second withdrawn motion?
What?
Your withdrawn motion?
I am.
I'm asking a second withdrawn motion. We had the second.
Mr. President, if I may, we're taking the total amount of the capital budget. And I think we have a public safety issue here that's being excluded. In particular, there's the 22 portable radios that the police department need so that they can respond. The equipment they have, Motorola's no longer going to service this, if I remember correct, Captain Lafferty's discussion with us last week. So that's not reflective of having these radios. And I certainly, I certainly want the first responders to have radios. So, I would like to suggest that if we have the administrator's proposal, $792,880, the Budget Committee's of $365,880, I would like to, Captain Lafferty said he would be happy with a half of the 50, not half, excuse me, if it would work. I would like to see, originally, I'd like to see all 22 radios paid for, $51,600.
That's only half of the radios. $51,000 and only half of the radios.
No, you want 22, if I'm looking at the capital budget, correct me if I'm wrong, we can ask Captain.
I understand, it says 22, if you want, that's only half the cost of the radios. He told us on the radio, $3,000 each. So that's $1,000 a piece.
It is. It's because the price change, it's $4,500, and if you fully fund it at 51, it's half, it's 11 radios. It's 11 radios if you fully fund it at $51,000.
If you get 11 radios for $51,000, is there only 4? Okay.
Yes. I said that last time, hearing it was new pricing, I handed the town administrator printout from Motorola. So if, if you agree to $51,000, it's 11 radios.
I'm sorry, Captain.
So 11 radios.
So if we had $51,600, did you ever get 11 radios to your office?
Yes.
Okay. I will make that motion to increase capital budget $51,600 to get half of the radio requirements the police department needs, that's a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Wlensky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? How do we have a vote?
Yeah. So how do we provide public safety? Somebody help me for this, I mean, I...
You know, I don't want to... Time and place, folks. I stand by the recommendation that I made in my capital budget.
Also, another reason for the request is because they're not servicing the radios that we have. And I already have three down, so we're going to have to start replacing them. Rather do it sooner than later. And that's why you're requesting.
So, I made a motion for $51,600. So we're going to have the radio requirements, as the captain said, that they're failing, they're not servicing them. I don't know, who's qualified to cannibalize the goal? Like, this is not in 1970, we could do those things. All digital stuff now, so. Beyond my comprehension, I just made the motion, $51,600. We'll find the money somehow in this process tonight.
I would advise of the cruiser.
I was going to make a motion, especially for funding other things elsewhere.
We're discussing, discussing the motion, is there a second?
Huh? It had the second, this is going on.
A motion is for a second.
Right, it's okay. So, we're discussing the motion to increase $51,000. Under discussion, the administrator's saying, if we need the $51,000, that's really what we want to do. Take a cruiser.
Yeah, 5409024, right? Talk to Johnson.
No, not 024, 024, that's the, that's the detail, that's the detail front. You would have to take it out of the other, of the four, there's seven cruisers with the administrators recommending three. The Budget Committee's only recommending two and a half. So we're down to one and a half.
That's another safety issue in itself.
If that's going to take place, I would recommend that you triple the maintenance cost, 20 to 60,000.
A motion to have a second, increase $51,000.
So, yes, 51,600.
We'll call over.
Mrs. Vannoli? Assistant increase? No. Mrs. O'Hara? Yes.
So, yes.
Told you?
No.
Mr. Wlensky?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vannen?
No. Motion for further? Go back to the motion, there a motion to approve? $7,000, $765,880. There a motion to approve?
One second, Mr. President.
I make a motion for a discussion.
Need a motion and a second to get the discussion?
I make a motion for discussion.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Ogea, second by Mr. Vannen, discussion.
So, it just sounds like, you know, we're trying to fix a lot of problems this year, and I know that there's a lot of issues out there. It's just really hard to justify spending additional money that we don't have to fund capital, certain capital projects. I agree that more radios are really important. But yet, we're trading off $14,000 for the flood study versus the radios. At some point, something's got to give this year. And, you know, I think we just have to take that all into consideration.
I do have a question, Fire Chief?
Yes.
I know we just purchased, or we're purchasing, the fire engine from Nathanville. It's coming with hoses.
Correct.
So we have in here, fire fight hoses. Are they the same or not?
There's a foreign hose that's coming on Nathanville, right? That's correct, that's foreign hose coming on that truck. But we're, the money that I can propose for fire hoses for replacement for the hose that failed its annual NPA testing.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Any other discussions on the capital budget recommended by the Budget Committee? $765,880. Motion and a second, we'll call over. Yeah, you made a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second, Mr. Vannen?
He did.
For discussion?
Motion for discussion.
Hey, we're discussing it. Ah, I'm moving it to a document.
This is for the total, $765,800?
Yes. No, we made any changes to it.
Mrs. Vannoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Yes. Mr. Ogea?
No.
Over.
The number that the numbers bring in, 26,745,21, is reflective of an additional $44,000 that was identified recently in additional state aid. So all the other numbers, as best we understand from the state budget action, are accurate and as reflected in this budget from our own standpoint. This $44,000 mitigates some of the, or piece of the additional fund reduction that previously been anticipated. That makes sense.
$26,274,000, I can't say it. Bye, thank you.
And I know that the Budget Committee hasn't seen these numbers because we just got them from the state, but my guess would be that you would concur with moving the additional state aid into their budget this past, like, through today's budget.
So, was there a motion?
So, with a new number, I look for a motion for $26,274,521.
Seven.
Motion by Mrs. Vannen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs., we'll answer you. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So, it looked like, FY '19 adopted, there was $731,7 was adopted, and we paid $728,300 district tuitions, but we projected $836. Do we anticipate such a high number again? When do we have better priority on those numbers? It's $100,000 last year. It's funding for that set over. Consolidated, I got it. We got it. Yeah. So I'm trying to get some better understanding about the outer district numbers, that's all.
I'd have to defer to the superintendent of the Chair of School.
Many of these, the outer district schools have rolling admissions. So, we should have more coming in through the summer and more through the year. So, it's a hard number to pin down. We're looking at it increasing somewhat. Fortunately, we do have a number of seniors who started elsewhere four years ago and are graduating. So, have graduated. So, the trick is not to replace them with new students. But, I tell you, I wish I could tell you the hard numbers. We're taking right recommendations, projections, and this happens all through the summer.
Any other discussion? There are none, we'll call over.
Mrs. Vannoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogea?
Yes.
Mr. Wlensky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next item is, grants and contributions, $19,318. There a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vannen, any discussion? Any discussion by the board? There are none, we'll call over.
Mrs. Vannoli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogea?
Yes.
Mr. Wlensky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Now we'll go back and revisit, to the two that we skipped. Which was?
I'm sorry, what do you want?
Can we see the updated bottom number, looks like it?
What is that, and I'm sorry?
$98,217 versus $1,025.
$44,966?
No, I was trying to, I can read. $988.
Sydney, nothing you can do, my old eyes up there.
Yeah. Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
But that doesn't include contingencies.
That includes the 100,000.
Oh, it includes what was originally, it includes what we had originally in benefits.
I'm sorry?
The benefits that we're going to go back and revisit.
The benefits?
Because of OPEB.
Oh, OPEB, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Which was in the benefits, but that included, oh, it's already in there under budget, no changes. I would think that we need to do that just before we do. Contingency. Page is in there, so.
11.
So on page 11 of 13, the benefits side, it goes on to actually page 12. So we have a number of $2,563,943. That's the actual number today, is the change that we've already made in the budget. There a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve twenty-five million, what, two million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonilla, any discussion? What does the council want to do?
I understand the purpose of funding OPEC. I still struggle with the amount. That's just why I stand, even at the two hundred. I know we have to fund it, but if we're meeting, I agree, if we're meeting our obligation in a year when the budget's still tight.
Yep.
How many? Two million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, what?
Two million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. That's the motion, is there a second? Is there any other discussion? So call vote.
This is Vladimir.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Oshie?
Yes.
Mr. Lunskey?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Now we're going to go back to the country's statement.
Six, okay.
On page six. Where do we stand in respect to the, to the four percent cap right now?
One point eighteen.
I'm sorry?
Three point eighteen.
And what does that equate to in dollars?
Well, how much you can go up in dollars? Twelve hundred thirty-five thousand.
One thirty-five?
No difference. With the TA, we were three point nine-three, and you all were different by about one hundred nineteen thousand. One hundred nineteen thousand, and we still had a, a leeway of about fifteen thousand. It's about one thirty-five.
So the three point one eight toward the four percent cap, that's what, like, over the forty-five proposed for a fund balance, right?
I'm sorry?
The fund balance, contingency, uh, both the administrator, uh, department, the administrator as well as the budget committee recommend forty-five thousand dollars put into fund balance restoration. That forty-five thousand is reflected in the three point one eight, correct?
Yes.
Essentially, what you've done is pretty much tracked the, the budget committee's recommendations. Um, you know, it was, it was three point one three.
Right.
I read three point one.
So, uh, Councilman Wilshire, uh, so this is public, it's not a sidebar conversation. Uh, fairly around, I'm, I show concern, or voice concern about roads, and, uh, we've read that on water report, uh, the administrator said, "We're a little above the twelve percent for fund balance." I'm wondering, uh, help me out, the, the accounting folks that work for our town full-time. What can we do to take this money and put it into a voter pool?
To take this, this permit, this two-hundred-and-nineteen?
Yeah.
Or you probably have to vote to change how you're going to use the fund.
Later, it's not for tonight, right?
Right. Once we, once we close the fiscal year, confirm that that two-hundred-and-fifty hasn't been, you know, isn't needed for any other purpose where, you know, I don't think we have anything, I don't anticipate anything in terms of a snap room with the budgets where we come to and say, "Whoops, you know, we're over something by fifty thousand dollars." That means that the only place that it can come from would be from the contingency.
Right.
Um, I don't anticipate that, but that's the kind of thing that could happen. So until we, we close the books for the twenty-nineteen fiscal year, we don't know what that number has been. The other issue I'll remind you is that, that the, the fund balance, uh, was calculated based upon this year's budget. Uh, next year's budget's going to be higher, which means that unless you add something to the fund balance, the percentage goes down. So, you know, as the budget grows, so does the target with the fund balance to comply with the, uh, the, the minimum twelve, maximum sixteen, um, policy. So all those numbers we would look at, um, when we, we close the year and know what our, our budget's going to be.
So that forty-five thousand, and both, all three have recommended that's in anticipation of the increase of this budget, correct?
Oh, again, you're tying that simply to the fund balance. It's not just fund balance, it's, it's, um, it's a contingency for the fiscal year.
Yes.
And such that, you know, okay, at some point, you know, I mean, Councilman, you've seen the prior council buy eighty thousand dollars worth of weaponry for the police department out of the contingency fund. Um, not this council or its predecessor, but a prior one. Um, those monies are available for use as we go through the year based on our recommendation and the council's decision-making.
I understand.
I have to emphasize, you can't spend that forty-five, uh, redeploy that forty-five thousand now. It's actually very light. I mean, I, I think a number below a hundred thousand dollar budget, um, is risky, um, but, again, with all the circumstances, I would rather take risk there than not fund the, uh, study for Jerry Barrow, uh, as is obvious based on what we've done.
We, we, that's, that's covered. Uh, so basically, sixty days out from the end of this month, not that far away. Councilman Oshie, we're going to be looking at this money, see what, what this council would like to do with it, so, you know, I'm on record, I, I'm really concerned. We all are, we're all concerned about our votes, I guess.
Well, you know, again, I'll emphasize that I developed a plan with the DPW director that, um, with the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is budgeted this year, and my expectation is that in the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, we will have five, I'll be requesting five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to keep moving this up. Um, if that happens, then we will do another two miles next year.
Roughly?
In the second half of the calendar year, we will do the next two miles of roads. That's how we are, are planning this process. And the year after that, it should be six fifty, I won't be here to do it, but on the other hand, the objective would be six fifty, you'd be a little shy at the two years, the two miles. You'd just still be, you know, um, having a significant chunk of money. You could, you know, maybe skip a year, and, and you do two and a half miles the following year, and keep managing that, um, to, you know, catch up with this deferred maintenance, if you want to call it.
Right now, right now, you guys are focusing on a number that's already set in the budget, and there's nothing to do with this budget. My concern is that forty-five thousand dollars isn't enough for this town to carry in. It puts us at greater risk, and I think it needs at least to be doubled, or even rounded to a hundred. I think we can do it right now with the numbers that we have. It's just, it's not enough for a budget size that we have, and the thing we have going on the town to carry, that will, that will be more than happy. And again, I think we need to increase it, double or even four hundred thousand dollars.
I wasn't saying that, I wasn't focused on changing that number now. I know that number's locked, and there's nothing we can do with the two fifty now. It's just, it's additional money out there, so it's the forty-five plus the two fifty is really what you would have to work with next year if you didn't put the money to the fund balance. So you have over three hundred thousand dollars in contingency toll plus the forty-five.
The contingency doesn't roll over, that's just...
But it could be...
We close, we close a year, but if we don't move it, if we don't move that money, it goes into the fund balance. I mean, we can access the fund balance at any time we want, but it's, it's not the good thing to do, that's...
Right. Uh, my encouragement would be to look at the low resurfacing budget in the DPW program and keep following that, not, you know, trying to...
Not bank on, 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 on spent money.
We can, yeah, we can spend all, you know, there's miles and miles of roads that need to be done. We could spend every penny that, that could be appropriated, but, you know, the, I think the responsible program is to just get us, the reason we picked two miles is because we have sixty miles of roads, uh, or thereabouts, and you want the surface to last, you know, only be relied upon for thirty years, we've got to do two miles a year. And in this time, that is roughly an eight hundred thousand dollar number. If you do that, we'll ultimately get ourselves, you know, to a point where all the roads are being properly kept and not allowed to go into the disrepair that they have now.
Without touching.
That's without touching the reserve or the contingency.
On the contingency fund, I want to make a recommendation that we increase that number in the fund balance restoration from the initial line to a hundred thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonilla, any discussion?
I do have a question about the revaluation. Is that what planning purposes?
The re-dollar, the re-dollar we just had?
Is that what it is?
Yes, and then every ten years, and then we budget for it, because every ten years is like over, like...
It's a year, what?
There's just going on, and it's gone. There's a figure on that cross.
So we fund it, we fund it every year, we fund it every year, so we're not hit with a, with a big, with a big increase in the money.
Yeah.
It's a coupon, kind of level, coupon budget.
Yes.
There's a motion in a second, any other discussion? Harry Nunn, no call vote.
This is Vladimir.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Oshie?
No.
Mr. Lunskey?
No.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Motion failed. Can you see, I'm doing it, sixty-five dollars. So with all of that said... Who's the bottom line number now, Mr. Yon?
Three point eight.
Who, I'm sorry?
Three point eight.
No, bottom line number, five percent of the number.
Yes.
Oh, seventeen?
Yes.
So I would make, I would vote for a motion.
Mr. President, let me interrupt you, but I don't think anybody voted on the contingency line. We held it, but then we had a discussion, and the motion failed.
There was a motion for sixty-five?
Uh, it's okay, it's not. It was no motion, it failed, and I moved. I thought there was, I could be wrong, but I just held it. There was no motion for sixty-five.
The motion increased, but not, but...
That motion increased, failed.
So is there a motion of, that the minister cut it down?
There was a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bonilla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Hara.
Uh, the motion was for the sixty-five, yes.
Any other discussion? No call vote.
This is Vladimir.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Oshie?
Yes.
Mr. Lunskey?
No.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Motion failed. Can you see, I'm doing it, sixty-five dollars. So with all of that said... Who's the bottom line number now, Mr. Yon?
Three point eight.
Who, I'm sorry?
Three point eight.
No, bottom line number, five percent of the number.
Yes.
Oh, seventeen?
Yes.
So I would make, I would vote for a motion.
Mr. President, let me interrupt you, but I don't think anybody voted on the contingency line. We held it, but then we had a discussion, and the motion failed.
There was a motion for sixty-five?
Uh, it's okay, it's not. It was no motion, it failed, and I moved. I thought there was, I could be wrong, but I just held it. There was no motion for sixty-five.
The motion increased, but not, but...
That motion increased, failed.
So is there a motion of, that the minister cut it down?
There was a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bonilla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Hara.
Uh, the motion was for the sixty-five, yes.
Any other discussion? No call vote.
This is Vladimir.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Oshie?
Yes.
Mr. Lunskey?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. So now I'll entertain a motion, the total budget, forty-four million, nine hundred sixty-six thousand, seventeen dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Lunskey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'... Discussion? No call vote.
This is Vladimir.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Oshie?
Yes.
Mr. Lunskey?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. We've set a spending plan, we look around for next year. Now, this is, we, we read, we met our tax question.
Yeah, that's the last, yeah, that's clear. What were the challenges? Assess them to assess taxes within that range, any tax of, like, the, except the taxes.
We need to put, uh, we need to put the, the range of numbers in there.
Give me the revenue budget first. Give me the revenue budget first.
You just voted, so moved.
There are motion to approve current years, taxes, interest, and fees out, thirty-four million, six hundred twenty-two dollars, six hundred twenty-two dollars, three hundred and forty-seven dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bonilla, is there a second?
So.
I'd like a look, there was a second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, discussion?
Yeah, somebody clarified what was just said there, because I was trying to find all the numbers. What exactly, help me understand this, please.
We're doing the revenue budget, I know. We have to approve the, we have to approve the spending plan, now we have to not do the revenue budget. All right, the same for cover out, uh, spending, correct?
Then we'll, we'll take a vote on, uh, what the residential, commercial, and federal will be, is that correct? Is that proper?
We'll set on the method of...
The method.
We'll set on the method of tax question, the assesses as that.
Okay.
What we need to do is revenue budget. There's a motion in a second by a revenue budget. Does that number need to be changed from what was presented in this?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Because we're doing the revenue budget. Right now, we're doing current years, taxes, interest, and fees out.
Yes.
And we have a number that was presented based on the budget, and these numbers. Do we need to change, do we need to change that number?
They have explanatory weight changes automatically.
And it might be...
No, right, I'm sorry, I saw it on the screen.
Thirty-four, six, thirty-four, seven, oh, four is the adjusted.
Thirty-four, six, thirty-four, seven, oh, four. So is the makeup of motion, withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second, or just?
Yes.
So now I'll entertain a motion, thirty-four million, six hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and four dollars.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Mr. Bonilla, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion? No call vote.
This is Vladimir.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Oshie?
Yes.
Mr. Lunskey?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Do any of these other...
I think they all have new numbers.
Do any of these other numbers change as we go down through this?
Joe, you just reminded me that if you change any of the bottom numbers, it actually does change the current year taxes that we need to collect. So maybe you should go on the current year taxes last.
We do the revenue numbers on everything else, and then the current year's taxes, fill in whatever the difference is.
Yes.
So these other numbers that we had in the list are correct?
Yes.
On the revenue budget. So this number that we just did, is it good, is it good, or it may change?
It may change, if you change it in the other numbers.
Okay. Next is prior year taxes, five hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bonilla, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Discussion? Any call vote?
I do have a question. How did the budget committee get a higher number to the, to the prior year taxes?
They...
Is it something they did differently, or?
They had to look at the last...
Three or four years of AR, of accounts receivable, and you're more comfortable going in and out of the draw. Any other discussion? No call vote.
This is Vladimir.
Yes.
This is O'Hara. Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Next is town clerk, other fees, 377,400. Motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Bonneville, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah. I just wish more people were filing for marriage here. We're, we're hearing in the marriage license category.
They don't get married anymore.
I try to push them away.
Don't do that. So you try to talk sense into themselves.
No other discussion, no call vote.
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Next is building inspector, 180,000. Motion to approve?
Move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, second by Mrs. O'Hara. Discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Police department, 27,510. Motion to approve?
Move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Miscellaneous receipts, 480,177.
So.
Motion, motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Interest on investments, 70,000. Motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
School department, 235,000. Motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Round the state aid, which will be the number, correct?
Can you read it out loud?
So it's, you want the total number?
Yep.
Yeah.
8,443,726.
746?
20.
26.
726.
726.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve state aid, 8443,726?
Move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Our second.
There was a second. It's O'Hara.
Oh, I didn't know. Sorry, Mrs. O'Hara, a second. Any discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Now we have to go back to that question. Did that number change?
No.
Is there a motion to approve current years' taxes, interest, and phase out?
So.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bonneville, Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? No call vote.
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
And that will give us a total revenue budget of 44,966,017, correct? 017. So is there a motion to approve a revenue budget of 44,966,017?
Vote.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshia. Discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
The method of tax collection, we need to get, we need to get those numbers filled out, correct? On this change, is that me? You want a recess to, would you like a recess so you can calculate that?
Yeah, please.
When we take a private recess. Motion for private recess.
So move.
We have a recess. Is the school department, for the expenditure for the school department? Got operational expenses of 2,196,363. Assessment expenses of 310,4828. Pursued total expenses of 2,420,000. Is that a zero? Yeah, 04458. There are motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, Mrs. Bonneville. Discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Next is the school department, proposed revenue budget. Operation revenue, 2,185,363. Assessments?
636.
Hmm? What did I say?
Five.
Oh. 63630. Assessment revenue, 310,4828. Pursued total revenue of 2,420,4458. There are motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshia. Discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Next is the enterprise fund for the water department revenue budget. Water total revenues of 701,8969. Is there a motion to approve?
Vote.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second? Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Discussion? Any non-no call vote?
Mrs. Bonneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
We should have done this reverse, but the water total expenditures are 701,8969. We should have done that first, but there are motion to approve the water total expenditures.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bonneville. Discussion? Any non-no favor? No call vote. Signing that.
Yes. Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oshia?
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes.
Next, there is method of tax collection. I'll read this. South, this town council vote as follows. That the finance director be and is hereby authorized to pay each order approved by the town council, by the school committee, or the director of public aid, as the case may be, the finance director be and is hereby authorized to provide receipts for the interest on overdue taxes toward the payment of interest on bonds and loans of the town. Finance director be and is hereby authorized with consent of the town council to hire such sum, sum of money as may be necessary to carry out the business of the town for the ensuing year. That the finance director be and is hereby authorized to pay the town's debts and interest. It's hereby resolved that North Smithfield Town Council, in a meeting legally assembled on June 24, 2019, hereby orders a levy, apportionment, and collection of tax on the ratable real estate, tangible personal property, and excise tax on registered motor vehicles and trailers, in the sum not less than 34,519,257, or more than 34,569,257. Said taxes are for ordinary expenses and charges for the payment of interest and indebtedness in whole or in part of said town and for the other expenses or purposes authorized by the law. Taxes assessed shall appall and apportion said tax on the inhabitants and ratable property of said town as of the 31st day of December 2018 at 12:00 Eastern Standard Time or daylight savings time. With exception of new construction, as the case may be according to the law, and delivered to and deposited the same in the office of the town administrator before the 30th day of June 2019. The town administrator, on receipt of said assessment, shall forthwith make a copy of same and delivered to the finance director, who shall forthwith issue and effect said copy warrant under his/her hand directed to the collector of taxes of the town, demanding him/her to proceed to collect said tax of the present in a state liable therefore. Said tax shall be due and payable no later than the 15th day of August 2019. All taxes remaining unpaid no later than the 15th day of August. Taxes no later than the 15th day of August 2019 shall carry until collected a penalty at a rate of 12% per annum unless specifically abated by a vote of the town council on Title 44 of the General laws of Rhode Island, 1956 as amended. Said tax may be paid in four installments. The first installment of 25%, no later than the 15th day of August 2019. The remaining installments as follows. 25% on the 15th day of October 2019, 25% on the 15th day of January in 2020, and the remaining 25% on the 15th day of April 2020. Each installment of taxes paid on before the last day of each installment period successively and in order shall be free from any charge for penalty. The first installment, a recent succeeding installment of taxes not paid on the last day of the second installment, may or may be as a third. And the whole tax remaining unpaid balance of the taxes, the case may be, shall be become due and payable and carried until collected a penalty at a rate of 12% per annum from the first quarter due date in the last, as I quoted, thus specifically abated by a vote of the town council on Title 44 of the General laws of Rhode Island, 1956 as amended. Quarterly pay and options shall not apply to any tax levies in amount not in excess of 100, in which case such tax shall be payable in a single installment. There are motion to approve?
Motion for discussion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Zlansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshia, the discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, I understand this is for the method of tax collection. At one point, are we going to allow it to set the tax rate to residential, commercial potential?
It's my understanding through the court of ordinance that we do not set the tax rate as set by the assessor. Never happened in our court of ordinance. Am I correct? This is what it says?
It's an ordinance that the council passed.
Chapter 6, Finance and Taxation, Section 6.
Exactly. That's exactly it. Okay. But that's how the council would change, change the ordinance, would change the method of setting that rate. I'm a little taken back, I'm trying to process this, I'll be honest. So 2008, we had a residential tax of 1724. We had the evaluation done for this year, it's proposed to be 1634. Commercial rate 19.13 in 2008, this year it was proposed at 18.1, roughly a 1% discounted levy for commercial. Tangibles were 42.9999. I don't know how this rates it now. I guess I'm losing the sight of the bouncing ball, and somebody help me. If the residential rate is about to be 16.34 for this year, I'd like to see it drop to 15.74, roughly a 50, 50 cent per thousand drop for homes, per thousand. And I would certainly like to have consideration that we retain the commercial rate at 19.13 and the tangibles at 42.999. I'm looking to relieve the residents, there's a 600, there's a major swing here, and it